I thank you, everybody. Can I call to order the Turdifren Board of Supervisors Public Meeting of October 7th with the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with infinite justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have our special presentation items? We don't. I'm going to start with the announcements and we'll come back to you, hoping that something shows up. We have new microphones tonight. We'll see how it goes. So we're going to start with announcements. This is actually a special presentation we're going to do, but we're waiting for the actual certificate to show up. So we'll have announcements. The municipal authority meeting scheduled for October 8th is canceled. In observance of Columbus/ Indigenous Peoples' Day, township offices will be closed Monday, October 14th. Turn in unneeded medications for safe disposal on Saturday, October 26th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Township Building during National Prescription Takeback Day. Ambassador, I believe, wants to make an announcement about the Library Mini Golf fundraiser.
So the Library Foundation has their annual golf tournament, but instead of having it at a golf course under the open sky, they're going to have mini golf in the libraries. So there'll be 18 holes in the Stratford Library and two holes in the Peoli Library. So this way, it's not going to get postponed for the weather, so please come and join us. And there are some bookmarks in the back on the table with details of the fundraiser. Thank you.
Ambassador, so this weekend?
We can do first.
You can do first. Okay, thank you. I'm going to start with a motion to amend the agenda. We want to defer item J until our next meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The Board made an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss legal matters. Captain Moyer, do you want to give us a police staffing update? I'm sorry, wait. Oh, sorry, I have to approve the minutes. Sorry about that. I got myself out of order here. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
The move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Sorry about that. Thanks, Ambassador. And now Captain Moyer.
All right. On behalf of Chief Beatty, Supervisor Miller, and members of the Board, I would like to thank you this evening for the time that you're giving us to present our plan for future staffing. As you know, at the June 17th meeting, you passed a resolution allowing the Police Department to add three officers to our complement, bringing us up to 45. And we were asked to prepare some data showing the need and the eventual planned deployment of the additional officers. So in the interest of time, I will jump right in. The chart you see on the left is our current command structure. The chart on the right is a breakdown of where we currently have our staff allocated. So as you can see, the Traffic Division currently has three officers in it. The patrol shifts each have five. And Community Policing has one. Detective Division has five as well. Unfortunately, as things go, we currently have one officer that just retired. We have three on long-term medical leave and two on light duty. So right now, the Traffic Division only has one officer in it, and five of the six patrol shifts currently have four assigned to them, with the remaining one having five. So we did some comparable, we looked at some comparable things. The chart on the left shows, the blue bars show our current staffing levels compared to similar departments in Chester, Montgomery, Delaware Counties of similar scope and size. The red bar shows the change in staffing since 2012. Now, I will caution you, the reason ours says 47 was because we did this when we made that original ask, and because we submitted it that way, we didn't want to change it. So that, with the additional three, that should be 45, and we should be minus two instead of minus five. Obviously, you know, there's been talk over time over the fact that since 2005, it's down eight, but we generally look at it over the last 10 years instead of looking back as far as 2005. We also looked at service calls and motor vehicle crashes, and we tried something new, trying to look at calls per officer per year. So as you can see, our service calls remain fairly steady over the last, from 2019 to 2023, over the last five years. Motor vehicle crashes are up a little bit, but we attribute a lot of that to getting back to normal after COVID with people getting back on the street. When we looked at the amount of time our officers are spending on a call, it's sort of unquantifiable to look at the total time. But what we do know is that they spend 31 minutes generally on service calls. The reason I say it's unquantifiable is because we don't generally keep track of follow-up time. So for instance, of those 776 motor vehicle crashes in 2023, 245 of those are reportable crashes. What a reportable crash is, is a crash that involves injury, a vehicle being towed, or both. So I can tell you that, just for, as an example, those crashes, generally the reporting takes a good 30 to 45 minutes afterwards, and that assumes you're not going to the hospital to track down information on injured parties, or trying to figure out who owns what car and things of that nature. We also have noticed an increase in time people are spending on certain calls due to the complexity of it. Mental health-related calls have changed dramatically over the last probably 10 years, where officers are spending a lot more time dealing with people, trying to find resources for them to turn to. There's also been programs instituted over the last four or five years, such as Safe to Say, which is a program where kids can report that, you know, classmates are maybe in crisis or something like that, and it takes a little bit of time to track down where these kids are located and trying to deal with them. We also noticed quite an increase in time people are spending on cybercrime and things like the check frauds we've been having lately, because, you know, some of those follow-ups, trying to get ahold of banks, trying to get ahold of other involved parties, take quite a bit of time. But as you can see, our officers are handling about 781 calls per year on average. I went back two years to try and figure that out, compared it to Radnor, West Ocean, and Upper Marion, because they're similar in size and scope to some degree. And most of those figures, that's something that we hadn't done in the past, so most of those figures, I had to go to their leadership and try and get some of that information. The last slide I have for you, the chart on the left examines our call volume per time of day. So that is 2023. And as you can see, we generally peak between 7:00 and 11:00 a.m., 3:00 and 6:00 p.m., and then again at 11:00 p.m. Those morning hours between 7:00 and 11:00, we can generally supplement that if we have a traffic unit out there. We have detectives in the building, of course, myself, the lieutenant and chief are here. We can help. 11 o'clock at night is covered generally because that's during that overlap time between the evening shift and the midnight shift. Where we see a drop-off is that time period from 3:00 to 6:00, especially where calls get backed up and we start chasing our tail a little bit. The chart on the right, that depicts where we would allocate those additional resources in a perfect scenario. So we would add one to the traffic unit, and we would add one officer to each evening shift on both ends of the week. So they would be staffed with six, while the rest of the patrol shifts would have five. And again, that is obviously in a perfect world where we don't have people on long-term medical leave, or light duty, or retirements, things of that nature. So far, we have made a conditional offer to, we have one officer in field training right now. We made a conditional offer to an officer last week, and we're doing some backgrounds now to try and replace or get ready for these additional three people. So that is all I have for you. I thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Captain Moyer. Any questions from the Board?
I just have one question, kind of unrelated to this, but I would want to hear thoughts on the concept of police departments hiring social workers to handle a lot of the mental illness cases that seem to be increasing. And, you know, I'm not saying that they're different right now, we should look at one, but maybe it's a shared option with another municipality, but it seems that that may help reduce the time our officers spend on social services, right?
There's generally two thoughts on that. One is a crisis team model, the other is a co-responder model, where you pair up a social worker to ride with an officer. I don't think departments in Chester County have enough mental health work to do where a co-responder model is really necessary. The county has started a new program this year where they have a crisis team, and it works through that 988 number, where someone, if, say, a family member is in crisis, they call that number. They will actually now, and this just started not long ago, they will send a team out to that residence. And at times, we won't even know they're there. If they think they can handle it, they will handle it. If they feel like an officer's presence is needed, they will contact us and meet us there. So far, there's been, you know, a few hiccups, as there is with any new program, but it's generally worked pretty well. Like I said, that co-responder model, I think, is better suited for larger areas, cities. I know there's police departments that have actually started whole entire units where it's officers, and then they'll have, you know, four or five social workers, and they just go out and that's all they handle. That's all those officers handle, along with those additional resources.
Good to hear that the county has some of those resources. Thank you.
Yeah. Captain Moyer, could you just clarify for the audience, how many officers we had before we added the three, and how many we have now? I know you showed 47, which is weird.
So we had 42. With the additional three, it'll be 45. And that, I'm sorry, that'll happen in January. That would actually hit that 45.
No, thank you. Just so everyone knows, we have 45, not 47 officers. Anything else? Questions from the residents? No, thank you. We're super excited. Thank you for the hard work. I know, I really appreciate you getting the information so people can understand why we thought this was an important thing to do for the township and for the police. So thank you. And thanks for the great service.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you. I need a motion to approve a profit sharing agreement between Retriever and Turdifren Township. Mr. Duraco is not here.
Yeah.
I can handle that. So we've been using Retriever recycling service for the township for a number of years. We have, before we tonight, is a profit sharing agreement with that entity to continue that service. So we will serve any of the recycling products they do sell. We will get a percentage back on those. Pretty straightforward. It's a pretty successful program. I've used it myself personally. So it's a nice additional option for people to avoid having to drop some of the electronics to other locations. So happy to answer any of the questions.
Are there any changes to the terms from the way we operate today?
No, I don't think we've had, it's kind of a renewal we had about four years ago. It's just very similar. We have to, more or less, with a resolution.
Thanks. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second? Any Board comments or questions? Resident comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the contractor for the Valley Forge Road ADA and Signals Project, Tuleme Electric, lowest qualified bidder, Mr. Burgo.
Chairman Miller and members of the Board, tonight we have the project for Valley Forge Road before the Board. As you recall, last month, we did reject the bids that we had received. They were over budget. You did authorize us to re-advertise and receive bids. We did that. On September 18th, 2024, at 11:00 a.m., the township received sealed bids from qualified contractors for this project. Three bids were received and reviewed. Lenai Electric Corporation was the lowest qualified bidder at $1,024,301.42. They were the lowest qualified bidder, determined. We reviewed those, and our consultant Bowman reviewed them. They're within the 2024 capital budget approved. That being said, we also remind the Board that we have $976,880 in a PENDOT grant for this project. So it's a very large chunk of money from the work that will be done. But we're asking respectfully the Board tonight to award the Engineering Department Project 2024-06, Valley Forge Road ADA Signal Improvement Project to the lowest qualified bidder, Lenai Electric Corporation.
Thank you, Mr. Burgo. Do I hear a motion?
The move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the Board? Resident comments or questions? I, for one, am excited about this project. I think it'll make a big difference to that busy road. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to execute and release the termination of financial security and development agreements between SHI-3 Sage Atwater Reed LLC and Turdifren Township, Mr. McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This project goes back some time. It was actually approved back in 2017. Just so everyone knows what we're talking about, this is the Echo Lake senior living up in the Atwater community. The final release was actually granted back in 2021. The township back in 2017 required developers to record not only the stormwater operations and maintenance agreement, but also the financial security agreement and the developer agreements. We have moved away from that now, simply only requiring the recording of the document of the O&amp;M, as that's an ongoing obligation to successor property owners. So we no longer record the developer and financial security agreement. This entity is looking to refinance, which is not unusual. We've actually done this recently with the same attorney, and they're trying to clear up title, and it's still showing up on the title. So they have asked that we prepare a termination agreement, just clarifying for title, that there's no more responsibility under the financial security and the developer's agreement. The building is up, it's open, so there's no concern from the township standpoint.
Thank you, Mr. McKenna. Do I hear a motion?
The move.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Comments or questions from the Board? Comments or questions from the residents? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the final escrow release in the amount of $24,877.96 for SHI-3 Sage Atwater Reed LLC. Balance remaining is zero. Mr. Burgo.
Chairman Miller and members of the Board, the same project we just talked about, Sage Atwater, in 2021, they had released their escrow and posted a cash escrow for two items, stabilization and some erosion controls. This is just release of that. It's a final release of that cash escrow, and that work has been inspected and satisfactory.
Thank you, Mr. Burgo. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the Board? Resident comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to authorize the purchase of equipment for the TT TV studio, Mr. Duraco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Last year at some point, actually, Gene received an email from Leitronics saying that the server was no longer manufacturer-supported. And so, you know, he started the process of looking for a replacement. He's found that replacement. He, you know, we've looked it over, we've talked over with, like, our main provider that we go to for this type of equipment. And then they recommended it as well. So Gene's recommended it. The cost is a little over the budget. I think it's $16,000. We have $15,000 in the budget. But however, you know, we have carryover from previous years, so the cost is covered from our grant from Verizon and Comcast. So I'm seeking authorization and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Duraco. Do I hear a motion?
The move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the Board?
So I just had a comment. I want to say that I did look, I don't know if this is the right equipment, but I did go to the vendor's website, and, you know, everything seemed to be in order, so I can support this.
Any other, any other Board questions? No, resident questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve a proposal from Bowman for traffic signal permit updates, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Staff's requesting the Board's approval for a traffic signal compliance review and to update all of our signal permits with PENDOT. During our annual inspection, our audit from Higgins Electric, we found there are many permits that are out of compliance with configuration and traffic signals and signage. Some of that is as simple as the timing gets changed to move traffic quicker through, like, the Peoli area, or they added a sign, and we can't just go and change the permits anymore. We actually have to go through a engineer in order to file everything with PENDOT. We got together with Bowman, who is our traffic engineer for the township. We got a proposal from him. It is not in the budget for this year, but it's $27,500 for them to update all our signal permits.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. I just, I'd like to make one small change to the motion, which is that there's a couple, two changes we want to make to the agreement, pretty minor. And I would say we would approve this subject to the township manager's satisfaction with the agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know you mentioned this in the Finance Committee. We had reached out to Bowman, haven't heard back yet. I'm sure it's, if we're to protect who can make a change order, it's a small number, and I think, I'm sure Bowman, and we've worked with Mr. Williams and John York before, so we can certainly work that out to my satisfaction that we protect the township and that one section you're concerned about.
That's okay. Do I hear a motion?
The move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any Board comments or questions? Resident comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to authorize the capital purchase of a crack sealer for Public Works, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Staff's requesting Board's approval to replace our 2001 crack sealing machine with a new one from the same manufacturer, Marathon. We use this machine to, anytime we put down new blacktop, any road surfaces to keep all the water out, make our roads last longer. We do the same thing along the roads. We'll end up, we'll go out there with the machine and seal in the cracks. We will get this machine from a municipal supply under the Co-Stars program for $72,915. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Do I hear a motion?
The move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
What's the age of the current machine we have?
2001.
2001, yeah, okay, that's fine, fine. Thanks. Any other, any other Board comments or questions?
I do have a question, Darren. How, is there a, like, a warranty? I'm using the word warranty, but, you know, if something happens to it in a year or two, that they'll replace it or fix it without us having to do anything? Is there, like, a warranty on it?
Most of them have, like, a year warranty on it.
Is it for the whole machine, or is it just for certain parts of it?
It's usually the whole machine.
Okay. And can we get an extended warranty?
I haven't checked, so I can't answer that question.
Okay. I'm just wondering.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the Board? Resident comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we're going to hear about the Friendship Park Master Plan. Mr. Duraco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I apologize for his attire.
I got your back.
Just give Gene a second, he'll pop it up. There it is. All right. Thank you. So I'll start with a, kind of, a little bit of a brief history on the master plan and the overall program. This started last year, you know, in conversations with the Parks Board about specifically Friendship Park and how it's, you know, more or less an underutilized park that we currently have. And so, you know, we just started discussing things that we can do. And so, you know, we discussed, you know, the best way to deal with this is through a master plan. So, you know, we went out, submitted, you know, received a couple of proposals. We selected Simone Collins. And so earlier this year, we started the process of the actual master plan. And so, in working with a couple of the Parks Board members, the chair specifically who's here, we went through men at the park, talked about what are some of the things that we would like to see in this park to, again, better utilize, this highly visible park. And so, we started talking about a lot of different ideas. And so, you know, over the course of, really, the summer, we held multiple public hearings, public meetings, I'm sorry. We solicited feedback from the neighbors. We sent out a mailing to them, so that way they could be, you know, a part of the process. And so, tonight, we're here to just kind of wrap this up and kind of discuss what the end result is. And so, you know, I think this is a good image of the existing park as it stands. You'll see, again, we have a basketball court, tennis courts, we have a small play area, and a small path system. To access the park... To access the park, you really have to come all the way up to the driveway on 252. There's also a small pedestrian access that runs along 252. There's actually no sidewalk that wraps around on the Friendship for the neighborhood. So they've kind of just, over the time, just beaten down a path. And then you can see there's a little bit of a steep access on Friendship. And so through, through working with Simone, you know, we identified that, you know, our main bathroom is a porta potty. There's no pavilion. The playground is most likely the original playground. The path system is in major disrepair. And so, you know, we're left with a large area that's just really nothing to do with. So, you know, one of the main ideas that we had was, you know, we have our area, Teagarden Park, for dogs that are unleashed, but some people like their dogs on, you know, not just being able to run around. Maybe they're not as, you know, ready for that Teagarden. And so they really need a fenced in area. And so, we really looked at the park and this area where you see the shaded red, that's kind of the existing buffer. That's all weeds and overgrowth. That whole section of the park and all the way down, again, there's nothing. And so, working with Simone, we came up with this plan. And so what this plan does is it takes, I think it's a little over an acre of the whole park, fences it in for, for dogs. We also designated a small area in the corner of 252 and Friendship for, you know, ideally smaller dogs, smaller area, smaller dogs. Keeping the same footprint for the playground area, just again, looking at new playground, adding a pavilion with some picnic tables. So again, families can come, kids can play, they can sit in the shade, adding some more trees, redoing the entire path system throughout the park. And then also adding sidewalk access all the way around the park into, onto Friendship Drive, redoing the access on Friendship Drive. And then also formalizing the path that, again, informal path right now onto Agnew, formalizing that, and then also adding some parking spaces. We also included in this plan, potentially in the future, on the other side of Friendship, the township owns a few acres of just woods. And so we talked about maybe, you know, originally maybe making that the dog area, but it's really, it's not conducive to that. And so, one of the neighbors actually came up with the idea of doing just a regular nature trail. So down the line, we really envisioned cleaning that out of all the invasives, allowing, you know, more native species to regrow, adding a walking trail that you'll be able to access through the park across Friendship. And so, you know, recognizing that we're going to need to phase this project. Total cost, if we did everything, would be 1.7 million for the main portion of the park, and about 1.8 if we add in the nature trail. So what we're looking to do in the short term, well, next year, is really redo that path system and then get those fences up for the dog areas. It's an easy actionable item. I think, looking at this, I think I budgeted a few hundred thousand dollars to get it done. And so, that will be most likely in what we'll be looking for and looking to do next year. And then will allow us time to now go out and get grants to do the other things. But at the same time, the way we laid out the master plan, so that way we can phase it, and it's an easy phased project. So if we want to go in and do the playground, we can do just the playground. If we want to do the pavilion, we can just do the pavilion. The parking, same thing. We can add the parking without a lot of trouble. So, you know, I can't thank the Parks, the Parks Board Chair. She was instrumental in getting this done, really helped organize the Parks Board and really move this forward. So I'm excited about this and happy to answer any questions about the plan.
And how much effort are we going to put into writing grants for this? This looks like a classic thing that we could grant following over a period of time, right?
Yeah, I definitely think we'll be able to target some grants, especially for some, you know, some of the bigger things, the playground specifically. Again, we've also, in other places, LAD would be the most recent example. You know, within a pretty, less than $100,000, I think, that, that comfort station cost us. So looking to do something similar potentially as well. The idea is they provide, again, on a, on a plan, you know, the specific area and the idea, how we actually execute is up to us, but, you know, you know, we'll try to, we'll try to leverage as many grant dollars as we possibly can.
Yeah, no, I think it's exciting. It's, as you said, it's a highly visible, it's a small park. It's highly visible. It needs a little TLC for sure. I think it's an exciting, exciting project. So thank you. And thanks to the Park and Rec Board for all the work they did. I know you guys, Diane, Fisk, you put a lot of work into this, so thank you.
Yeah, just a quick comment. Friendship has been discussed over the years and then put aside. So this is exciting. Moving forward with the right way to do it and, you know, involving the neighborhood also. And this is exciting. So thanks, Joe. And thanks, Diane.
Joe, can I ask a question? You said, do the, the dog park and the, do that part first?
That and the paths.
In the paths. What would it, what would be an idea for the dog park, the paths, and possibly the parking to sell that? I mean, if we're going to upgrade so that the parking would get done, I mean, do you have an idea of how much that might cost?
Yeah, the, the, the dog area is about 150, a little under $150,000 to do the, you know, it's to clear out all the overgrowth and then really redo all the fencing and do all the fencing that's required. And then the pavement's redoing that, you know, ripping out the old stuff, putting the new stuff in, will be about a little over $100,000. And then, you know, again, there's the demo. I think the, within the paving portion of that is the, is the parking as well.
So around $250,000?
Yeah.
Give or take.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Diane.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm most excited that I think the whole board worked together, and we took every single thing that we could into account. And probably the biggest thing was staying fiscally responsible. So I heard the word up there tonight that the park needed TLC, and that's really what it is, not creating some new extravaganza, but it just needs to be fixed up. It's right on 252. People have mentioned coming up the road. It just looks, the gateway to our community is not in the best shape. So I'm very pleased to have this be received by the supervisors tonight and very pleased that the working relationship has been excellent at thinking of every single thing that we could possibly do. So thank you.
No, thanks, Diane. We're excited to get to the next phase, which is the fundraising and the actual construction. So it's, yeah, it's an exciting thing. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, you have a virtual comment?
Good evening. This is Carol Clark. First of all, I want to say, looks like a lot of work and effort went into this. Kudos to all those who were involved. Looks like a wonderful plan. I was two questions. First of all, are the slides that you shared with us all available online somewhere?
I will have those posted tomorrow.
Thanks, Joe. And then the second question was, how many parking spots do we have currently there and how many do we anticipate? Oh, and related to that then, is spillover parking available on the side streets? Just want to be careful for the residents who live around the corners from that.
Yeah, so right now there are 20, I think 22 spaces, and we're adding another 14, so it'll be 36 total.
Thank you so very much.
Any other board comments? Any other resident comments? That's right.
Mr. Clark, you have to press the button. Yep, there you go.
There we go. Sorry, Ray Clark from over the place. Just given the idea of kind of improving the look and the kind of presentation of the park, I worry a little bit that the focus is on like the dog area. And what is it in particular that made you think, let's do the dog part first? And I'm a great fan of everything that keeps unleashed dogs out of the preserves in the conservancy. So to the extent that that helps, that's good. But I'm just interested in that.
I mean, it really comes down to dollars and cents, right? The playground itself, the playground area would be almost, probably about three quarters of a million. You know, redoing that, port in place surface, the stormwater that we would most likely do underneath. So we're looking for something that's going to be able to improve the park, add some more access, and, and it's something that we can, again, accomplish. We're looking not just to have the study sit on the shelf for years and years because we're trying to, you know, and, you know, it's something that, some of the, some of the things that are associated with the dog area, we'll be able to potentially do in-house. And so it really, we're trying to, again, maintain that fiscal responsibility and, but at the same time accomplish some, some things that are in the plan.
Yeah, Ray, I would, I would add to that, that if I had to pick one of the more common topics we see in the microphone here, it's people who want a fenced dog area in the township. And that's one that, and this is a, by the ability to accomplish that in an area of a park that also needs a little TLC and refreshing. So it really accomplishes quite a bit for not a lot of money. So I think it's a really good investment for the township. I think the Park and Rec, you know, I mean Diane and her group have put a lot of work into figuring out where it should be, and they identified this one, which isn't one we would have thought of, honestly. I mean, it's a really good, you know, good idea to have come up with this park as a place to put it. So, but that is a very common request we get from the residents. And we have time to fundraise for the swing, you know, the playground park, which is really what we need to do because it's a big investment.
Yeah, I have to ask, can you break down the 750 for that playground park? Because that, that's high. I'm sure it's stormwater. Can you give us a little breakdown?
Stormwater is always the big part of that. Let me find it real quick. Yeah, so the, the equipment itself, they're, they're estimating is a half a million. It's 10,000 square feet of, of play area, so. And, and I, yeah, so that, the, the port in place surface is, is also expensive. It's 200,000, but again, it's, it's, I would say the industry standard at this point when you're redoing it is to have that rather than wood chips. So there's, that's the majority of the cost right there.
Other board comments or questions? Any of the resident comments or questions? Now I want to go back to a special presentation. So Brian O'Leary and Judy D. Filippo will present Rob Williams and Eric Williams the George Fasic Award for Efforts in Historic Preservation. Please come forward. And unfortunately, we don't actually have the document, the presentation.
Hello. Good evening. It is a pleasure to be here. We did have knowledge that the certificates had arrived, but we'll find them another night to give the actual physical certificate. But in the meantime, I thought I would give you a little background about the organization, which I represent this evening, called Chester County 2020. In 1996, the county adopted its first comprehensive plan known as Landscapes, an award-winning accomplishment. Several visionary leaders devoted to the county's future believed that a nonprofit organization was needed to communicate, convene, and promote the principles and vision of the Landscapes Comprehensive Plan. Thus, Chester County 2020 was born. Today, 2020 supports the county's updated comprehensive plan, Landscapes III. Since the early 2000s, it has supported the county's agricultural communities through Keep Farming First seminars. It organized community conversations, bringing together all sides of an issue or concern to find the common ground. It has also hosted affordable housing summits, an issue that still needs attention today. Chester County has 73 municipalities, governments, each with its own leadership. It is a great strength and is also a challenge. There are more than 1,000 citizen leaders actively involved in land use, growth management, land conservation, historic preservation planning. The task is to educate all of these citizens, these volunteer citizens who are managing our lands. And it's somewhat complicated land use laws and how they apply in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So working with PMPEI, our partners, the Chester County Planning Commission, West Chester University, Chester County 2020 created the Master Planner Program. Trained and certified instructors share their knowledge of the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code. Planning Commission, Planning Commissioners, Supervisors, Zoning Hearing Board Members, and Municipal Staff all come to these and take these courses. PMPEI also offers continually education credits to attorneys, landscape architects, and to professional engineers through the completion of these courses. One of the other benefits of being in class with others from all around Chester County is to share their common experiences and challenges. It is often interesting to hear that someone from Coatsville shares a similar challenge that someone in Easttown might be facing. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, though, to present awards from Chester County 2020 and from PMPEI to Eric Williams and to Rob Williams. Each of them completed the three core planning courses, Community Planning, Subdivision, and Land Development Review, and Zoning, thus becoming known as Master Planners. They then completed a fourth planning course, Zoning Administration, designating them as recipients of the George Fasic Award. They are the first of seven Master Planners to receive this award here in Chester County. And I might also add, Chester County 2020 has been providing these courses since 2009. They are the first two to be members of a historic commission from a local municipality. And they are the first to be designated as the George Fasic Awards from Tridifferent. So I am here with Brian O'Leary, who's the Executive Director of the Chester County Planning Commission, who also shares in our joy for this wonderful achievement.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here and for honoring Eric and Rob for their achievement. It takes a lot of time and dedication to, to go through these courses and really get a handle on how things really work. Because I think people who come into these positions, they don't know yet. And so they need some training, and I'm sure many of your planning commission members and others have gotten the training over the years. And this has been recognized by Chester County for a long time. George Fasic, who this award is named after, was the director of the Chester County Planning Commission for a long time, got Landscapes going. And this need to train municipal officials is really why PMPEI exists. And I'm really happy that it's two members of historic commissions because that is an area that is really growing in need, particularly with the 250th coming up, the county's recently completed Heritage Tourism Plan. I'd say EACs are another area where those members would probably really benefit, Environmental Advisory Committee, to taking these courses. So I encourage the township to continue to support, and I've worked with Bill for a long time, back when he was in Bridgeport, a long time back. So, and Bill's always recognized the importance of kind of this training and understanding the Municipalities Planning Code. So congratulations to Rob and to Eric for the great achievement that they've that they've achieved.
Congratulations. Can you pose for a photo?
new matters?
Mr. Chairman, just under prenouncements, I just thought it'd be useful to mention that the A3 Chestnut Road initial use hearing has been canceled.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's right. Yeah, thanks.
To be accurate, it's been withdrawn.
Yes.
Correct. There will be no rescheduled hearing on, after Wednesday. The application's been withdrawn completely.
Oh, thank you. I forgot about that. Thanks. Now we go to board new matters. Any board member new matters? Any citizen new matters?
So, yes, we're working. Just quickly, I was here hoping to just remind folks on the Picket Post Agreement that there's, a big part of that, of course, is negotiation with the neighbors about trees and screening and so on. I hope that we don't lose stormwater management as an important part of what needs to get done to make sure that that new tennis court there complies with all the township regulations. And I, I don't know what has been done, but it's a very critical spot just above Valley Creek. We've had the fire department rescue people from the covered bridge just downstream from there. So, real important that we, every i is dotted and t is crossed before that court gets used, and that we know the stormwater management is, is in place. So, hopefully Steve will be on top of that.
Thanks, Ray. Yeah, it's, the zoning ruling is specific, is very specific to the fact they have to comply with all the township regulations.
Right.
Steve, do you want to say anything here?
No. No. Second point, more, maybe more important than that, was just to thank the township for the Community Day as an exhibitor there. Obviously, we were blessed with great weather, but it's clear that there was a huge amount of work that went into making that successful. And just to thank, I guess Colleen was the organizer of that, clearly did a great job. Darren and all public work setting everything up from an exhibitor point of view, it was fantastic. So, thank you very much for that.
Thanks, Ray.
Thanks.
Any other citizen comments? Our next meeting of the board supervisors is scheduled for October 21st. Do we hear a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second? Aye.
Aye.
Aye.